There you go.
Yeah.
That is a sweet.
Audio check. Hey, gentlemen.
It's starters.
Hi. Best dressed for over there.
How are you?
I was handsome. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the planning commission for the city of San Clemente, California Wednesday, May eighteenth. Meeting, meeting to order. Let's see, Commissioner McCann, would you do the honors of the pledge?
Sure.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in this law.
Mr. Tamian, would you call roll for us?
Commissioner Prescott.
Yeah.
Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Here.
Commissioner Camp.
Here.
Chair Pro Tim McCann.
Here.
And Chair Crandall.
Here.
Excuse me. The next item is special orders of. Special presentations, we have none. We have one set of minutes to approve the minutes of May fourth. Do we have any corrections or motion?
I have one correction. Page, page six.
Mr. McCacken?
Page six or page five, misspelling my name.
Ah, okay.
A instead of I. Otherwise, I moved to approve.
Second.
As correct.
We have a motion by Commissioner McCacken. Second by Commissioner Prescott, and where was that correction?
Page five.
G H A I A.
Okay, we will make that. Correction and we'll do a vote. Commissioner Prescott.
Hi.
Commissioner McCacken.
I.
Commissioner McCann.
Hi.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
I.
Commissioner Camp.
Hi.
And Commissioner Crandall is also an I, so it's unanimous and one. Absent and. Back to the agenda. Next item is oral and written communications. Mr. Tamian, do we have any mail in communications?
City staff has not received any break.
Okay, so we have no oral or written communications. The next item is consent calendar. And I see Chris Wright is doing this one from remotely. And it is general plan consistent, consistency findings for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three capital improvement program. Chris, you have the floor.
Chair Crandall, just.
It's consent calendar.
Yeah, as a point of.
Okay, do we have any discussion or does anyone want to pull it up or we could take a vote to approve?
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Motion by McCacken. Second by McCacken. Commissioner Prescott.
Hi.
Commissioner McCacken.
I.
Commissioner Camp. I got a little off, Commissioner McCann.
Hi.
And. Commissioner Cosgrove.
I.
And Commissioner Crandall is also an I. So that was a short evening for Chris.
Hi, Chris.
The next item is public hearings. We have. Item A is cultural heritage permit twenty-two oh oh eight Casa Rosa triplex. And David Correo is the. Representing the staff. You have the floor, David.
Thank you, Chair Crandall. Good evening, Commissioners. I team, I have the ability to share. Oh, you got it, all right. We can move on to the next slide. So yes, the project before us tonight is the Casa Rosa triplex. These lots are currently vacant within the residential medium zoning district and the architectural overlay district. Being in the architectural overlay district is what triggers this review before the planning commission tonight. And I'll go ahead and explain the proposal on the following slides, but we can see the vacant lots to the right. Highlighted in blue, next slide. Some, some background here that can help us understand the project. There is an easement agreement between one twenty-nine Avenue to Victoria, that's the lot that's highlighted in red. To the image on the, on the right. And between one thirty Avenue Rosa, one of the yellow lots to the right. This easement agreement grants one twenty-nine Victoria access through one thirty to access rear parking spaces. And the easement agreement does not define the easement on the property. They, the project team has reached out to the one twenty-nine Avenue to Victoria property owner and tenants. And they are both in agreement with the submittal of the application and have reviewed the plans and do support the project moving forward. Next slide. So again, the request is for a cultural heritage permit for a new two-story triplex with the. The Spanish colonial revival architecture style. It'll include eight covered parking spaces, which includes one guest parking space. Will have rooftop decks and you can see it rendering to the right of the screen. Next slide. So this was reviewed by the designer view subcommittee earlier this year. The subcommittee supports a project with minor changes involving the reduction of some corbels. The spacing out of rafter tells throughout the building and then simplifying building elevation. And the applicant was open to making these changes and are reflected in the device plans before the planning commission tonight. Next slide. So here's the proposed site plan, we have the building footprint highlighted in blue. The driveway that would allow the project team to satisfy the condition in the easement agreement is on the top of the screen. We can see it is, it is a twenty-four of wide drive aisle. That would allow one to nine Victoria to access the rear parking spaces. We have a second driveway at the bottom of the screen west of the property that would give access to two car garage as well. Next slide. So here's the front elevation as a view from Avenue Rosa. There are two elements that I want to point out here, the first one is a wing wall circled in red to the left. At the DRC medium. Staff was asked to look into the code to see if this is an element that can, can go beyond the six foot height limit for walls. We did look into that and found that that item has not been adopted yet or the code has not been amended to allow those wing walls at the moment. But it is something that seems to. Happen in the future. The second element is the elevator tower here. This was proposed after the DRC meeting. Staff did review it against the design guidelines and found that there is still some consistency. Given that we have guidelines that talk about high variation and visual interest. We didn't feel, staff didn't feel the need to take it to DRC for a second round for the, for the elevator tower. Next slide. Here's some landscaping, landscaping proposed consists of drought tolerant and native landscaping in areas that are visible. And setback areas that are visible from the street in compliance with, with the development standards. We are adding a condition, our staff would like to add a condition which will require the applicant to remove the three trellises. Furthest to the north of the east property line. They were open to this, but I think this is a detail that was missed in the recent middle for the planning commission package. So we would like to add that condition of approval. And, and as planning commission approves this. Project tonight. Next slide. So in conclusion, staff finds that the project is consistent with general plan policies, the design guidelines and the goals for the architectural overlay district. And is in compliance with. The standard. Next slide. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of Sequoia. And approve the projects, the project subject to conditions of approval. And we do have the, the applicant and the team available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, David. Let's see. The architect, Michael Lino, do you want to do a presentation or does the owner? Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, my name is Michael Luna, I'm a local architect. And the architect for this project. I'm here tonight with the owner, Mr. Sanjay Patel, his partner Jorge Stanbuck. Project manager and local Realtor Jason Wright. Our design team is also here. Although I haven't seen the civil engineer here yet, but we have our landscape architect, Mike Bunganik. To answer any questions on landscape architecture. This is the same team that. Recently planning commission approved our. The same owners project, same teams project over at the. What is it, Valencia building? They're on the corner of the old Top Toon site, which hopefully in a few weeks will be under construction. And we hope that this can be a nice gateway project for our community there. The, we're also joined tonight by, in, in the audience, we have the owners, the owner for the property. Behind us. The owner's representative, Mr. Joe Diorio is here representing the owner Mary McMenian. McMenamin at one twenty-five Avenue to Victoria. I want to just quickly point out that the project complies with all applicable zoning standards and we seek no variances or exception permits at all with this application. We have three two-car garages with direct access to units and as well as two additional covered parking spaces. But indeed, we do have a very unique. Ingress and egress easement recorded on our property and our neighbor's property. And with no definition of where and what size and so forth. So we said to ourselves, my gosh, they need ingress and egress, let's give them ingress and egress, let's give them twenty-four feet. Connecting back of their property with Avenue Rosa. And it just so happens that we need to have ingress and egress as well. So we took advantage of that, that easement and placed our garages, two of them. And additional parking along that side to share that full twenty-four foot wide aisle. And so it worked out as a win-win for both of, for both of us. And so that's how we addressed the issue and it left us still a decent building pad and so forth. So we were just working with the requirement and we think it will hopefully worked out well. The. Excuse me, the other thing that we did is we, we took, you know, we're proposing to restripe their parking back there so they can turn in. Perpendicular to their parking spaces, which allows them to turn in and back out and, and get back out to Rosa pretty easily. The elevator, indeed, we have. Since we designed the project, we already have earnest interest from. For unit A with regard to an elderly individual. Beverly who's here tonight, they're very interested in purchasing unit A as well as the families looking at potentially buying the other units as well. And, but they really need to plan for the future and have access to the, to the multi-level unit A. And want to be able to have access to the rooftop deck to enjoy that ocean view that we all enjoy in town. So henceforth the need for the elevator. The unique thing about the elevator is just turned out, so it's kind of in the middle of the footprint of the building. So the, as you're along Avenue to Rose, because the elevator is in the middle of the building, you hardly see it. And just because of the way the massing of the building is. And so you hardly notice that it's there from the street scene, that's for sure. You'll probably see it from beyond other vistas, but on the street, street scene, you probably won't even notice that it's there. We worked hard to address the unique circumstances associated with this site and we hope that we can win your support here tonight. And we're available here to answer any of your questions and thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Michael, let's stay right there. Does anyone have any questions for? Project architect?
I would have a question for either Michael or David.
Okay, any for the architect while he's standing up here? No, okay. Good job. Then. Commissioner Prescott, go ahead.
I just needed, David, if you could share with me the height of the elevator tower. So it reaches thirty-one feet in elevation and the maximum height limit is twenty-five feet. So, and I see that it, it still falls within the design guidelines, can you just explain further so that I fully understand?
Yes, the elevator towers are one element that can encroach or go beyond the zone's height limit. In this case, it's, it's, I think you said it was thirty or twenty-five?
Yeah, twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five, so they are at six feet, so they can go above the twenty-five feet by six feet. So if they're at thirty-one, it'll be in compliance.
Excellent, and can you also share with the height of the chimneys? They're also in compliance?
Correct, that'll be the same, yeah, same treatment for the chimneys.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got one for you, David. If in the future they want to apply for the gate and side pinwall. Would that require coming back to commission or not? Or can they just do that at the staff level?
They can do that at a staff level, they can submit an amendments, yeah, to the application. And I believe you would consider that a minor modification, given that DRC has already reviewed it.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that they. At design review, we supported, supported it if the code allowed, but I just want to make sure they didn't. Have to go through a long lengthy process to accomplish that.
And we, we did add a condition of approval as well that addresses that and would allow them to come back and request that.
Very good.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant or the staff?
Of course.
So, so regarding the wing wall and gate, are we not, we're, we're looking at this without those at this time?
Would you explain that, David?
Correct, Scott, well, the, the plans that we have, that you have before you tonight do have the wing wall. So there's a, there's a condition of approval that prior to the submittal of a building permit or the issuance, that the wing wall be removed for compliance with current code. Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. And then is there a condition of approval requiring the garages be kept maintaining a condition to where they can accommodate two cars?
There is no specific condition on that, the zoning code itself addressed, addresses that. Did you want to, did you want to discuss a condition?
Is, are you, are you saying that that's a requirement of the zoning code that garages be kept capable of parking the cars they're designed for?
Correct.
And there's no need for an extra condition?
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, very good, we will close the. Presentation portion and open it up for public comment. Did anyone from the public want to speak on this item? I see none and I'm not aware of any cards being submitted, so we will open it up for discussion at, between the commissioners. Would anyone like to speak on it to start with?
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, we took a close look at this project during our design review subcommittee. And we liked it to begin with. I think there's some, some creative things that have been done here. And it's, you know, in terms of utilizing the site. And complying with that easement so that both parties are benefited by that. I think it works out well. The only, only thing we really took exception to was, was I think there's some really, there's some nice features. Within this style of architecture. But it was a little too much, it was a little too busy, we thought. And I think that the architect has done a nice job of kind of trimming that back, the scale, the proportion. I think the composition of the elevations and really what you see from the corner. Of the building, you know, you look at these elevations and you see this elevator tower, I agree, and I can see that. I mean, that, the rendering is probably more accurate. In terms of what you're going to see from the street. So I'm certainly in favor of the project, it looks like they went a long way towards. Making it even more elegant. And acceptable and, and really complying with that style of architecture. So I support the project.
And the other commissioners?
I just wanted to share that I appreciate the parking. I think it was a nice design and it seems to fit the neighborhood, certainly getting the parking off the street.
Very good, okay.
Chair Crandall, yes. Can I just comment? Yeah, I just, I'm on the designer subcommittee as well and I appreciate the design team. You know, making revisions and improvements and I think we're building the project fantastic. And additionally, I can definitely make the findings that are in the resolution. So with that, I'll be supportive of the project.
Okay, I see no one else. Their hand up and I agree with. Commissioner McCann that the findings can be made and easily made. And. Adam, just one thing for your. Busy agenda to push through the fin wall at gates we, over. Probably eight years, we've been trying to get. Something done on that and I don't know if we can. Push that forward or not, but.
Staff is fully supportive of, of moving forward that. You know, I was unfortunately not able to. Review these plans before DRC at the, the last time, so I, I was familiar with the project. But, you know, it just occurred to me, and I don't know if this was discussed, but was there any? Is there any support for looking at this not as a wing wall, but as maybe an harbor that happens to be attached to the building? There, there is a height limit on, on harbors of seven and a half feet.
I don't know if it meets the definition of an harbor. I'd have to look at that, I mean, it would be great if we could get it approved now so they don't have to go through any more processing, but. If they come back and present it to staff, it should be a staff approval then. And it can probably be done before permits are pulled, so that would be.
Oh, yeah, and I, you know, just in a cursory review of the code, it, it seems like that, that might be an option. There might be some modifications so that it meets all of the actual height limits and. Those requirements, but I just, I just wanted to confirm before the commission made any decision that there wasn't an option to. Okay. Find a way to approve this now.
Very good, well, we will be open to a motion that.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Make one more comment, so. The reason that's not acceptable. Is because it attaches to the building, right?
The code has, I believe, I'm gonna. It's either five, but I think it's six foot walls allowed in. Side yards. Okay. And basically it's a wall with a door, is an harbor? Possibly, if that definition applied, is it a, it's not, certainly not a trellis, but. There's been support for getting an ordinance because it really does spread these houses out a little wider and make them not, it can be quite elegant. So there has been support on getting the code changed to address it directly. Yeah, and David, do you have any comment on that or?
No, I'm in agreement with. My husband said.
Is there any other definition that can be used for that wall? I'm sure you've been through it, just that you can present to us.
I was looking through the, the code right now, I did not find anything at the moment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chair Crandall.
Yes.
Can we approve it with the variance on the spot or no, because?
No, it wasn't in the agenda. We have, believe it, that's why I was saying, if they come back with something, can they do it at staff level rather than? With this presentation.
Has to be part of the notice, right? Has to be part of the notice, right?
Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Before I do. David, you said something about modifying a condition, I think, maybe for the landscaping, what do I need to?
Yeah, yes, thank you, it was to remove the three trellises. Furthest north on the east property line.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, the, the intent with that is to give the vehicles on, on the longer driveway some backward space. That engineering was concerned about. So the, the applicant is agreeable to that, it was just a detail that was missed. On the recent middle for planning commission package.
Okay, thanks, so I move that we approve a resolution. Approving cultural heritage permit twenty-two dash zero zero eight Casa Rosa triplex to consider a new two-story triplex on vacant property. Located within the architectural overlay district. And I also move that we add a condition that the project remove the northerly most, the three northerly most harbors on the east property line.
Trellises, sorry, trellises.
Yeah.
Harbers.
Okay, motion by McCann.
I'll second it.
Most, second by Cosgrove.
We're categorized categorically except for Sequoia, shouldn't that be part of the?
Yes, I think so.
Yes.
That is one of our findings.
Thank you, when we find it categorically exempt from Sequoia, thank you.
Commissioner Cosgrove, you agree?
I'm in the second, yes.
We'll call a vote, Professor Prescott.
Hi.
Commissioner McCacken.
I.
Commissioner McCann.
I.
Mr. Cosgrove.
I.
Mr. Camp.
Hi.
And Commissioner Crandall is an I also, so congratulations and look forward to these improvements showing up on that street. The next public hearing item is. Permit twenty-two one forty-three. Sea, surf, fish, beer and wine, and David is presenting this one also, so David, you have the floor.
Thank you, wait for I to put up, there you go. All right, next slide. Yeah, so sea, sea, surf, fish, beer and wine is a project before us. It's located at two oh two North El Camino Real within the mixed use three, mixed use three zoning district and architectural. And central business overlay districts. Next slide. So at this site, we, we had a previous restaurant named The Grill, it was a popular restaurant downtown, did not, that did not serve alcohol. And operated with ten parking spaces and it has been vacant since summer twenty twenty-one. Next slide. So the request is for a conditional use permit for onsite cell beer and wine outdoors with more than sixteen outdoor seats and or four tables. To accommodate a new seafood restaurant. Next slide. So here's a site plan highlighted in blue is the outdoor seating and outdoor patio where alcohol will be served. Next slide. So the, the proposed alcohol service hours are from eleven thirty AM to eight thirty PM. There are hours that are consistent with nearby restaurants, you can see to the table, on the table to the right. They would be ending all call service hours way before the current restaurants do. Most of the restaurants you can see to the right like Nomad or Pizza Port, they end at midnight. So sea, surf, fish would be ending at eight thirty PM. And again, just to clarify, this is for outdoor only, they're not proposing indoor nor is the approval for any indoor alcohol. Next slide. Proposed outdoor seating is thirty-five seats, eight seats per code do not require. Be any parking. Again, there is no seating, required parking is six spaces and the site provides ten parking spaces, right, full compliance with parking requirements. Next slide. Our staff did not find any noise concerns, given that there is no indoor or outdoor live entertainment or amplified sound being proposed. We do have compatible surrounding uses such as retail shops and restaurants. We do have two streets and an alley that adjoins the property, kind of helps as a buffer between the the restaurant site and the nearest residential development. Which is Las Palmas Village. Next slide. So in conclusion, we did have code compliance, Orange County Sheriff's Department and the state A B C department review the request and all in support. Staff finds that the request is consistent with general plan policies and in compliance with code requirements, next slide. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission determine the project is categorically exempt from Sequoia and approve the project subject to conditions of approval. And that concludes the presentation.
Very good, I see no applicant here. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
Do we know if the applicant has any history or previous applications with A B C?
Yeah, they do have a restaurant somewhere northern O C, it might be Laguna, but they do have experience dealing with A B C.
And no complaints.
I I have no answer to that, I do not.
Commissioner McCacken, that's not something typically staff would would investigate is complaints from an operator in another city. And and part of the reason for that is because we're not, while they do need an A B C license for what they're doing here. Our purpose is to review this property for the provision of a minor conditional use permit which runs with the land. So once this property has this permit. Anybody that the property owner gives the right to 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 carry this out on their property can do it. And in no time in the future would we have the opportunity to ensure that the next operator of this use. Doesn't have like some past complaints i- even in in other cities. So we really want to just focus on is this property. I, you know, is this property, is this property suitable for the use that they're proposing now? Additionally, none of the findings. None of the findings need to be met by confirming that the first operator under this permit. Doesn't have a history of of complaints in other cities, that would really be something under the A B C's purview to provide that license to them.
But the A B C did review in order to give them this license, right?
The A B C is not, would would not provide a license for this facility until this planning commission approves this permit.
Yeah, we're looking at is land use, not who the operator is. Other approving bodies, the city could take that into consideration.
That's why I left there was any information.
Simply, but no, we we do not have that information.
Okay, any other questions for staff on this one?
I have a question.
Okay, please.
You mentioned, David, that it expires at eight thirty P M, is that accurate?
Correct, yeah, that's what they're proposing.
Is that what they requested, or is there some kind of a restriction as to why other people are going later and these guys aren't?
That's what they requested, I I don't think it's in their business scope to go further than that, I think they want to stay more family oriented and not not go that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, are we just approving in this conditional use permit? The beer and alcohol service, or are we also approving the outdoor seat?
No, so the outdoor pad is already something that's is allowed and has been permitted. We're approving the outdoor alcohol service or alcohol service or outdoor seating.
Okay, so they're gonna utilize the existing configuration of the property for that. Okay, and all their seating is outdoors in the back?
Correct.
Not in the building, not on the, not on El Camino, it's all in the back.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you. Because it's just been my experience when I've driven by that under the previous use that there's quite a few people in on El Camino. Sitting at tables on the sidewalk, and that's why I'm asking the question. What exactly are we approving? Because if they were gonna seat people in El Camino. I have some more questions.
Yeah, I could.
To do that.
Yeah, Commissioner Cosgrove, I can clarify, so the the building division and the engineering division did review the application. And they also did express concerns with seating along El Camino Real, so this does not include seating along the El Camino Real sidewalk. So it's all gonna be within the existing parameters of the outdoor patio.
Okay, and then, you know, go ahead, David, please.
Yeah, and then to to further clarify, it's not entirely at the rear, when you were saying at the back, there is some seating on the side of the building as well.
Side.
But it.
Yes, Commissioner Cosgrove.
Okay.
On on sheet eight two, it's the first eleven eleven by seventeen sheet in your package. Just to orient you, this is attachment grade, it's site plan. What? What would be the bottom is El Camino Real, and then on the left side of the property is where that would be Cabrillo. My my accurate on that, or is it?
No, you're right. Yeah, Cabrillo.
Yeah, so, and in fact, it that actually shows it on the next page as well. It's not directly, there's not a lot of seating on El Camino Real, but there is, there is a seat shown.
Yeah.
Within, within five feet or so of the public right away.
And we are looking at beer and wine, not hard liquor.
Yeah.
It'll be limited.
Is it fenced in?
Pursuant to the A B C regulations, it will be.
Okay.
And that is a condition of approval before you tonight.
Okay, those are the things I wanted to be certain of.
I do have a question.
Commissioner McCacken?
Where's the sidewalk? See where you get to that planter, is this, is this outside of the public right of way?
Yeah, this site plan is only showing what is on their property, the the sidewalk is in front of that planter.
So you can, a person can still walk along the street and make the curve on Cabrillo.
That is correct.
All right, okay.
Now I have one tiny question.
Commissioner Prescott?
Possibly, Adam, you can address, or David, so you mentioned that there is, alcohol will not be served inside, is that because there are no seats inside, am I not seeing that?
Yes, that's correct, I I think, I mentioned earlier, they do have another restaurant, another establishment, another city. And their business scope, again, is more outdoors, they they want to provide that environment, so they were not interested in requesting for indoor service of alcohol.
So that those are two different services, so if for some reason a guest of a. Family, whatever, they walk inside with their drink, but is there any problems with that? I've I've never seen a restaurant that didn't have those.
That is, this is a unique situation, they would necessarily have, they they would necessarily have to carry alcohol from inside to outside. However, the 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 issue, the issue at hand is really where are they consuming it? And pursuant to this request, they could only consume it outside. They do consume it inside, that would, they would be in violation of their conditional use permit.
Yeah, I've got a couple comments as well.
Commissioner Camp.
So, you know, we we used to enjoy eating at The Grill there, and but it was pretty loose, I mean, there were just tables, benches. It seems like they're kind of formalizing the space, they're putting a fence and. I don't know if these are booths or if that's some sort of, and I know we're just looking at the A B C license, but do we get an opportunity to look? At the improvements once those are proposed, because all I'm seeing here is the site configuration. But that's a pretty important.
To the extent that site modifications are necessary for the commission to make the findings for this request, meaning. The commission finds that not all of these areas are are appropriate places for people to be consuming alcohol, yes. However, the use of the outdoor patio space is administrative, is administratively approved through the code, so there's. Unless there, unless there's a reason why they shouldn't be serving alcohol in an area. The commission really doesn't have the authority to weigh in on it. Furthermore, if the commission did decide to to limit the outdoor area of consumption. That doesn't mean that they couldn't put a table there, put a gate in front of it and have peoples out there eating and not consuming alcohol.
No, I get, I get that, but, you know, we've, we've seen, like, especially during this COVID thing, we've seen a lot of these outdoor dining. Areas pop up and we're trying to regulate to some degree the aesthetics, and this is a pretty important corner here. So that's kind of my question, I mean, we can, I I assume we can approve the A B C license and still. Have some opportunity to look at what that this thing's, you know, it's it's outdoor dining period, right?
Absolutely, so there is a trick, there is a trigger for additional design review, and that would be based on. The modifications that they're proposing to this, to the site. What they have right now is is really limited in in scale, so.
It's very visible.
Right, it is very visible, but it's basically just placement of of tables and chairs and a little railing. The the gates and all of that staff will review, but these types of items are very typically staff waiver level. If they propose something more that that does change the. It does significantly modify the aesthetics of the property, that that could be something that would be reviewed. Most likely at that point by the zoning administrator, and depending on what they're proposing, could have designer these up a minute, but. As well, but based on the application that they submitted, all the only thing that they need planning commission or designer review for. Actually, the only thing they need right now is planning commission approval of the use of of service and consumption of alcohol and. A building permit with a potential staff reveal of. Features that they're installing to close the area.
I do want to add to that, in talking with the applicant through this process. They decided to go with the C E P for alcohol service first and have intentions to submit a minor cultural heritage permit for shade structure over the outdoor patio. So at that point, like Adam mentioned, we will be suggesting D R C review for something like that.
Okay, I said, I think it's important. You know, that that we were able to take a look at these things because this, that's kind of what we're trying to set the stand, you know, precedent for with Del Mar, and I think we're gonna spread that out. To El Camino Real, especially it's it's as close to Del Mar, that it's an important feature, you know, in in kind of the central part of the town, so. But if if we're gonna be looking at it, then that's fine, but I I think we need, we need to make sure that we do get to look at these things as they come up.
Totally agree, and I think what we've got here is, it's my understanding, they're really trying to codify their business plan. And be able to apply for their permit and then move ahead with building improvements in the future, is that right, David?
Correct.
Okay, so it will come back to us when that occurs.
The shade structure may, and this is where the the code will dictate, if it's beyond a staff waiver. I I don't know off the top of my head whether that's gonna be zoning administrator review or planning commissioner review. But due to this, the the location of this potential shade structure, it would definitely go to designer.
And if we felt serious about it, we can make recommendation to zoning administrator that they forward it to us, it wouldn't necessarily be automatic, but. They would have to make a conscious decision to do that, is that correct?
Yes, the zoning administrator does have the authority to kick it up to the planning.
Okay, very good. We will close the presentation then. Any public comment on this, Adam? Uh, no, that would, okay, so we'll open it for discussion. I can make at this point the findings, so anyone else want to jump in and make comment? I see none, do we have a motion?
I I agree, I can make the findings for this, and I appreciate them, you know, going about it the right way to to get this properly, you know, approved and everything.
I would go ahead and make a motion.
Please, this is Commissioner Prescott, I did that from recording secretary.
And that the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of Sequoia, so Sequoia guidelines section. Gosh, what is the section, one five three zero one? And also, I would like to adopt the resolution of P C twenty-two dash zero one one. Approving the conditional use permit twenty-two dash one four three for Caesar Fish Beer and Wine, subject to the attached condition approvals. We have agreed, the resolution of zoning administrator of the city of San Clemente, California, approving conditional use permit twenty-two dash one four three. Sea, surf, fish, beer and wine to allow beer and wine service for outdoor consumption at a restaurant outdoor patio with more than sixteen. With more than sixteen outdoor seats between eleven thirty A M and seven thirty P M, Sunday through Thursday. And between eleven thirty A M and eight thirty P M, Friday and Saturday, at a restaurant located at two O two North El Camino Real.
Motion by Prescott, do we have a second?
My apologies, before the second is taken, the resolution should start by reading a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente. We don't have very many beer and wine applications that come to the planning commission, so I apologize about that, but if you could.
Amend my resolution to begin with the resolution of the planning commission.
Yes, please, thank you.
This resolution is of the planning commission. Of the city of San Clemente, California, approving conditional use permit twenty-two dash one four three. Sea, surf, fish, beer and wine to allow beer and wine service for outdoor consum- consumption at a restaurant outdoor patio with more than. Sixteen outdoor seats between eleven thirty A M and seven thirty P M, Sunday through Thursday, and between eleven thirty A M and eight thirty P M, Friday and Saturday. At a restaurant located at two O two North El Camino Real.
Thank you, Commissioner Prescott, do we have a second?
One second.
I think Commissioner Camp got in there, and the second is to approve the amended motion, correct?
Right.
Okay, we'll take a vote, Commissioner Prescott?
Aye.
Commissioner McCacken?
Aye.
Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
Commissioner Cosgrove?
Aye.
Commissioner Camp?
Aye.
And Commissioner Crandall is also an I. Passes unanimously. Okay, the next item is new business. One item is that we had. Commissioner Tyler submit her resignation, she's moving to Park City, Utah. And Adam, did you want to discuss anything about what will happen over the next month?
Yes, Chair Crandall, and just, just for the the order of the agenda, are are we in the reports then?
We are in new business.
We are in, uh, new business. I, I'd rather not add anything to that since it wasn't agendized, but rather discuss, uh, this under reports of the. Okay, that'll be fine. Okay, under new business, we have none under old business. We have none and we are now in reports of commissioners and staff. Thank you. Um, yeah, so, uh, vice chair Tyler, uh, submitted her resignation and, uh, she's, her and her, uh, family are moving, uh, to Park City, uh, for an opportunity there. So, uh, that leaves us without a, uh, vice chair at this time. And we're, uh, one commission is short. However, the city, uh, is currently in the process of, uh, advertising and, uh, recruiting applicants for, uh, the planning commission assignments, appointments, um, that are anticipated to occur, um, and I want to say by the end of July. At this point in time, uh, staff is, is comfortable with whatever the planning commission's, uh, direction would be as far as filling that, uh, vice chair position, um, with so much, with, which, with such little time left. Uh, we're also comfortable in moving forward with just leaving that seat vacant for the time being. So I'll leave it at that. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. Just for my benefit, how many, um, commissioners are up for reappointment in one, two, four? Okay, um, are you all gonna reply? Wonderful.
John, already submitted mine, uh, my application.
So there'll be one open spot, um, so there'll be a total of five, uh, to fill.
Yes.
Very good. Well, I'm certainly in support of you all being reappointed, so, very good. Um, yes, please.
As, as a, as a discussion item, um, you know, we've got, what, two meetings left until it gets reorganized. I would suggest that we just, you know, leave it vacant. Don't bother trying to fill it or whatever. That is my suggestion.
Very good, very good. I would agree with you. So we have, um, a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that.
First, well, first of all, so what if there's a split vote? I mean, we, uh, we haven't had one of those, obviously, cause there's been seven, um, commissioners.
It can happen. Uh, but, uh, usually if, uh, a split vote occurs, I'll offer to the applicant if they want to, uh, postpone or repeal their application until
we continue.
We have a
Oh, okay.
Seat. So it's up to the applicant if they want to. Yeah, and, and it, um,
I, I don't know.
Mal is that, uh, on this, but.
Appropriate, um.
Yeah, it, it should be said that a, a three to three vote is a no vote. The, the commission and I'll, I'll let Mal stop me if I'm speaking incorrectly. The commission has the ability within the meeting to call up something that they've just recently discussed. But if there's, you know, if there's, if the deliberations are indicating, um, that, uh, there, there may not be a six to nothing vote, um, the, the commission can always just take a straw vote, uh, to just kind of see where everybody is and that would inform the applicants on what their, um, you know, what kind of opportunity they might have to, um, continue the item, table it for, uh, for the time being, what have you. And Mal, you'd agree with that?
That's correct. Yeah.
Excellent.
Can, can I mention something along those lines? Just so everyone's familiar, for an applicant, it's much preferable normally to, if there's, if there's some inconsistency or, 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 or it looks like maybe they're gonna be denied to get the item continued and give a chance to try and make modifications and adjustments to the project to earn the approval than a denial, because a denial means they have to start all over again and it's, it's horrendously bad depending on what it is. So continuance is much better. If it's looking like it's gonna go south, it's better for the applicant to have a chance to try and rework it. I'd say that's typically the case, unless they just straight wanted denial to get up to council, but.
Denial appeal.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn? I think, uh, somebody was gonna start one.
I think I jumped in.
Okay, Commissioner Prescott?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Okay.
May eighteenth.
June eighth.
To June eighth.
To June eighth. Thank you for that.
So we have a motion to, um, adjourn to the July eighth meeting at six PM.
June eighth.
June eighth.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion by Prescott, second by Cosgrove. We'll take a vote. Commissioner Prescott?
Aye.
Commissioner McCacken? Aye.
Uh, Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
Mr. Cosgrove?
Aye.
Mr. Camp?
Aye.
And Commissioner Crandall is also an aye. Well, everybody get home to dinner.